We would like to call order to our City of Douglas Mayor and Commissioners Meeting, Regular Meeting, 2000, I mean September the 24th, 2018. We would like to call to order, and right now we will have our invocation by Commissioner Olivia Pearson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just there.
Pro Tim. You got us vote, didn't you? All right, well, I am pleased and honored at this time to call on Prophetess Pamela James to give us our scripture and our invocation. Prophetess Pamela James is the founder and pastor of In Christ Ministries located on Pearl Street here in Douglas, Georgia. She is also, Prophetess Pamela, you can go through podium. She is also a daughter of the house of Shallow Missionary Baptist Church under the leadership of Pastor Aiden Flucker and First Lady Jasmine Flucker. She is very instrumental in the well-being of the city of Douglas and Coffey County in that she has a clothes closet and a food pantry for those who suffer burnouts or are just in need. Prophetess James, we appreciate you for coming tonight and if you will.
Thank you all for having me here. It's indeed a privilege to be here to read a scripture and to say a prayer for this meeting. Okay. Our scripture is coming from Romans, Chapter 13, Verse 1 and 2, and it says, "Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God; and the authorities that exist are appointed by God. Therefore whoever resists the authority resists the ordinance of God, and those who resist will bring judgment on themselves." This is the reading of the scripture, the word of God. We are subject of the government of the land, and this means that we are to be under their authority. We should obey those who rule over us, no matter how we feel or what we think about them. God has established those in positions of authority as it pleases him, and so we ought always to be subject to the governing authorities of our homes, our cities, our state, our country. And this indeed is the first step in making our environment great. Let us pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. As we gather here today, Father, we are seeking you for protection, guidance, peace, wisdom, knowledge, and understanding for our mayor or commissioners, all our leaders in their respective places in this great city of Douglas and all over these United States of America. I pray for everyone, you have placed into a position of authority all over this country. Strengthen them to do the work you have so established for them to do, and let them always remember to give you the glory, the honor, and the praise in everything they do. This reacts in your son, Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so very much, Prophetess James, and you are welcome to stay with us if you have the time. We'll be glad to have you, or if you'd like to leave, you can. But thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Auntie James. Um, at this time, we will have our pledge of allegiance by the Coffey County NJROTC. Will be pleased stand for the pledge. our pledge of allegiance this evening, and right now we will have the approval of our minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. We can scratch that off. Next, we will have the approval of the order of our agenda. Commissioner Pearson made our motion, and Commissioner Moore seconded. Is there any discussion of the motion? All that are in favor, say aye. All oppose? Motion carried. Right now, this time, we will have the second reading of, to appeal, of the portion of the alcohol beverage license ordinance by City Attorney Adams. We'll wait on.
This being ordinance of the City of Douglas, Georgia Code of Ordinances to amend Chapter 6 alcoholic beverages by adding the definition of a pub and amend the exception of 620 sales in Town Center District to allow alcoholic beverage sales in pubs provided for an effective date for other purposes to be ordered by the Mayor Board of Commissions, City of Douglas, Georgia, Regular Meeting, Assembly, and pursuant lawful authority, the alcoholic beverage provision of the City of Douglas, Georgia, hereby amended, stands amended, follows. A public pub is defined as a public place where beverages, primarily alcoholic beverages, may be bought, consumed, and also provide food and sometimes entertainment, normally television viewing, and square foot of a pub shall not exceed 1,200 square feet and shall not exceed an occupancy low greater than 45 people. It shall be unlawful for any person to sell, offer, sell, distribute, or otherwise dispense any alcoholic beverage with the same as a Class 1, 2, or 3 license as defined by the Alcoholic Beverage Code within Town Center District. Order commission may authorize sale of alcohol by the drink under Class 3 license in the Town Center District provided. The business meets requirement of restaurant as defined in Section 6.1, the business meets definition of pub as defined in Section 6.1, often read the first time at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissions of the City of Douglas, Georgia on August 27th, 2018, and will be read for the second time at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commission as property advertising caption as required on the charter of the City of Douglas, Georgia on September 6th, 2018, and this is ready for action.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? This ready for action? Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor, I'd make a, Mayor Pro Tim, I'd make a motion to approve this, please.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All of those that are in favor of the motion, say aye. All of those are in favor of the motion, say aye. All oppose?
Aye.
So it's 3-2?
Yeah.
So far, are you gonna vote?
No, he don't have to vote.
No, I know he don't have to, I'm asking if he is.
I can. To approve.
Okay, well, it's a tie, so if it does not go forward, it will have to come back when you have the mayor here, so you can vote on it again. So if not approved, then not. Okay, ready for the next one?
Yes, sir. The second reading of the Alcohol Beverage Ordinance relating to City Special Events.
All right, be it ordained by the Mayor Board of Commissions, City of Douglas, Georgia, Regular Meeting, Assembly, and pursuant lawful authority, the Alcohol Beverage Provision of the City of Douglas, Georgia, hereby amended, stands amended, adding the following. City special events means an event held on designated city property, including a rice away located within the City of Douglas that is approved by, organized by, and/or sponsored by the City of Douglas. A city special event may include any city commission-approved event that is organized by the Douglas Coffey County Chamber of Commerce Downtown Development Authority. Downtown Merch Association is held only in the Town Center District, except during specific circumstances specified in Section B herein, it shall be unlawful for any person to possess an alcoholic beverage in an open container on their person while on the street, sidewalk, park, square, or other places in the City of Douglas, Georgia. Alcoholic beverages may be consumed within the boundaries of the city special event which has been approved for the sale of alcoholic beverages by the city commission or any approved city special event in the Town Center District under the following circumstances. The alcoholic beverage must be sold by a licensed Class 3 establishment, the alcoholic beverage must be in a paper or plastic cup, the capacity of the cup shall not be greater than 16 fluid ounces, and must display the name of the licensed establishment where it was purchased. The person in possession of the open container must wear an armband that has been pre-pented with the name of the organizer, sponsor of the city special event. The person in possession of the open container shall not possess more than one alcoholic beverage. Any Class 3 licensee establishment in Town Center District may dispense no more than one alcoholic beverage for the removal of the licensed premises per person, and no person shall remove more than one alcoholic beverage from the premises unless specifically authorized by ordinance regulations provided by this section shall be in full force. Often read the first time at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissions, City of Douglas, Georgia on August 27th, 2018, and read for the second time on September 24th, 2018, at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissions, City of Douglas, as property advertising caption as required on the charter of the City of Douglas, Georgia, and this is ready for action.
Thank you. This is City Attorney. This is ready for action. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mayor Pro Tim, I would like to make a note about these two items because I'm such an adamant person, such a, you know, I am so excited about what's going on in our downtown in the City of Douglas and the opportunities for business owners downtown to have people come downtown in the evenings. We normally sidewalks, you know, as we used to say, we roll up the sidewalks at 5:00 or whatever. Having had property in other cities, in Greensboro, Georgia, in places, in Valdosta, they do this, in other cities, they do this, and it is a, in Athens, Georgia, it's a wonderful time for young people to get out. There's not, there's no aura of misconduct or of anybody being over served, it's very carefully monitored. It's not an abuse of anything like that, but I think to be, to be in the 21st century, to be, you know, to compete with some of these other cities, and again, to make Douglas and Coffey County the kind of place that my children would want to come back to. This is part of it, and this is a small portion of it, and I realize, you know, nobody in here has any more conviction as far as alcohol and alcoholism than I might have. You know, I grew up in a strict Baptist home, but again, I'm saying, and of course, to go and participate in a sip and stroll doesn't mean you have to have a glass of wine. You know, we know that. And so, but I would encourage y'all to think this through and look at it as an option, just again, much like the restaurants, whether it's, you know, again, the places downtown that we would want to locate here would be able to do this. So, you know, I encourage the motion and the voting in favor of this.
I'd like to have something to say, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Pearson?
I agree with Commissioner McNeil. You know, as I've said many times, sitting here on this commission, we, the mayor and council commission cannot regulate morality, and I think it's a sin to, to get drunk, you know, but, but to drink in moderation, I'm gonna be honest, I don't think that that's a sin. I think there's, in anything you do, if you don't do it appropriately, you know, and if you overdo, you can commit a sin, such as, you know, overeating. That's one of the things that I do as a sin, I overeat, and we have to be real about, about things, you know? We just got to be honest. So I have seen other cities that have things like this, and we've got to take into consideration, if we want our downtown to thrive, you've got to do things that's gonna keep, keep your young people, middle-aged people involved and active in going down there. Nobody condones getting drunk and all of that.
We're not, we're not talking about a tailgate party here, y'all, okay? This is not.
Right, this is just something to allow businesses to do something that will help to, you know, boost, boost their sale and their businesses and to keep our downtown thriving, and that's what progressive, forward-moving cities, that's, that's, that's kind of what they do. But anybody who choose, make the choice to get drunk, that's on them, that's not on us, because you have a law against getting drunk, and when if you get drunk and you're in the public, you're going to jail. Oh, y'all laughing at me?
She cleaned my glasses, I thought I was looking through milk. She cleaned my glasses before that was on.
But, yeah, I'm serious, I'm serious. We can't regulate, you know, if people choose to overdo something or not, that's their personal decision. So I just want that to be clear, that because if we allow businesses to have alcohol, we're not saying, "Okay, Douglas citizens, go out and get drunk and show out." That's not what we're promoting. I want everybody to be clear about that.
And, you know, I won't call any names, but I see a young lady who's making a huge investment in downtown Douglas. We, you know, many of you who live here know who I'm talking about with all the little shops and the micro shops behind hers and everything. One of the, one of the best Christian women I know in Douglas, Georgia. So this is not something that, that she would be, you know, I'm not, again, it's not about us making the call for these people and how they, you know, if this is a yogurt shop and this is a, or this is an ice cream shop or whatever, we want to have it open downtown, we want to have things at night for these people, but we want to make it so that there's some versatility. And these people who are coming here from other cities that have a glass of wine in the evening and that are accustomed to that would be doing it at their home, let's, let's sell it and make some money. You know what I'm saying? I'm just saying, it's, it's something that's taxable, it's something that's a profit to the city, and I'm sorry.
On our, on our first one, just to clarify that, you said we had to wait till the mayor come back since it was a tie? So who was all the three in three?
Yourself, Commissioner McNeil, and myself.
Okay, okay. Any discussion on this?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to elaborate on the second one. My biggest concern is, I'm against it, and the reason I'm against it is because I feel like it will open up a can of worms. We start with the alcohol, next thing we know, we have drugs on the street that put more pressure on our police force. Me, myself, I'm dead against it because individual, when he go to drink it, he can't not control I'm walking the street, I'm downtown, anybody could be downtown. One of my grandkids, I vote on this 10 years from now, drug driver, hit him, boom, you know, it's over because I voted for this, you know, and I'm dead against, because, you know, allowing this to have it out in public, like we're talking about, I'm against it.
Commissioner Allen? Any discussion?
I don't drink, I don't favor alcoholic beverages being drunk, never seen anything good come out of it ever in my life. I've arrested a lot of people over the years, I've defended people, I've prosecuted people that abused alcohol. I don't, I don't find that to be a good environment, I don't like to go around where everybody's getting drunk. They want to drink in an establishment, that's their choice, but if it's a public place that, that my family could be in, no, I'm not for it.
Because it does, the only thing it does, it leads from one thing to the next, you know, and we know, we're trying to get control of the drug situation here in Douglas. And me, myself, start with the alcohol, next thing you know, you got drugs on the street, and we got enough of that on the street right now without adding, opening, you know, the door for more drugs and things, that's why I feel.
Drink as much of Coca-Cola as you want.
But my discussion, my discussion would be on that, even bigger cities than the City of Douglas have a high crime rate, have a higher drug rate than we do in little Coffey County, City of Douglas. And me personally, drinking is not gonna put more drugs on the streets because they already out there.
Let the drugs off, just say.
Right, they already out there. But drinking, period, but this, in this incentive, that would be just in one designated area, am I correct?
Yes, you're right.
I'm correct about that.
And one beverage, a limit of one per person.
Okay, and just believing with alcohol, I don't think it's liquor, they, they won't have a liquor, will they?
Beer and wine.
Beer and wine, okay. With alcohol and stuff like that, I just can't say that that would be, that that would bring more problems, but I feel like because since it's going to be going on downtown, and they will be monitored by the police, the City of Douglas police, if a person is drunk, I feel like, you know, that they will, you know, be responsible to say, "Well, hey, I need a designated driver." But I just can't say that this will bring, reflect, will bring, will bring, will bring conflict in our community and will up crime rates and will up death rates, will up killers and DUIs and all that, I understand that, but in order to decrease your DUIs and your drunk drivers, you have to get control of those that are drinking first. And I have had two family members that got killed by a drunk driver, I don't have to think in future tense, I could think right now. My cousins, I have had a pastor that got killed by a drunk driver, your pastor too, and, and a bussy. And with saying that, that, that doesn't monitor, I mean, just because this is, and it's a timeframe of from 5, what time it is? 5 to 8, just one drink. I mean, how much does it take for you to get, could I get the chief of, the interim chief of police to answer this question for me? How much alcohol does it take for your system for you to get drunk?
It depends on the body mass of the individual, but the norm is for a 12-ounce beer, it's .02 per drink. And it takes .01 per hour to decrease.
What size the cups will be that they will be issuing at, anybody know?
16 ounces.
Okay. With that being said, I'm for it because I see that the city, other cities, they do it, that's bigger, the crime rate higher, the drunk drivers higher, all of this higher, but I can't say that this will, that this will add to that situation. I can't, I can't, I can't say that realistically. I can't say that.
The city, yeah, the mayor, and I hate to interrupt, but Mayor Pro Tim, we've visited some cities that, that are doing this, in an entertainment this way, with music, with little music festivals, with just street corner type things where they're playing and stuff out in front of a, and I use a J&amp;D Cafe or something like that in the city or in one of our parks and stuff, and again, we were so impressed with some of the things they've done. I've been to the sip and stroll, you know, in other cities before, and the, it was women, and, you know, they conducted themselves very, you know, very professionally, very whatever. It was not at all the environment that we may be picturing here again, this was not a tailgate party, y'all, okay? So that's not what I'm advocating here. I'm advocating something that would be a quality of life enhancement, I think, and something that we would monitor and manage, and again, we could take it back, we could try, we could take it back if it gets out of control. So, you know, I'm not an advocate of people overindulging, but, sorry. You know, and I, I have to say, I'll be honest with y'all, even in my college days, you could put all the beer I've ever had in the palm of my hand here because I don't like the taste, but again, that's, that is an acquired taste, maybe, but for people who do it and manage it, okay, and whatever, you know, I, I don't want to create an environment for children either, that it's the forbidden fruit, or they're then more tempted to, you know, I don't know, I just want people to do it, do it responsibly, and I'll rest on that, thank you though.
We done had discussion, all in favor of this motion, say aye. Aye. All oppose?
Oppose.
We have to bring that back.
I thought it supposed to be, you're supposed to go and handle your ward, not your personal belief. Your personal belief has nothing to do with what your ward want to do. Your ward want to relax, have, they have sip and drink parties all the time in Valdosta. I ain't never seen nobody get drunk, found out, have no accident. Rupertoos, they have drinks. If a person want to drink, they'll leave their house drunk and come out and kill somebody. That's what they want to do. But I don't see what that's gonna interfere with Douglas, Douglas need to step up anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna have discussion and questions and concerns by Commissioner Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. To begin with, I want to first of all ask the question, Mr. City Attorney, were you able to find out any more information for us concerning GMA's travel policy that we were talking about in the last couple, last meeting?
Yes, ma'am. Took me a long time to find this, but I finally found it.
I'm sorry.
And, you know, this OCGA 3635-4, which establishes travel policies for governing authorities, part of it was enacted before I was born and while Commissioner Mayor was a young, I mean, Commissioner Moore was a young man. It was enacted in 1965.
Gosh, it's written in tablets back in those days.
Yes, ma'am. Then it was amended in 1973. Amend it again in 1974. Amend it again in 1975. Amend it again in 1979. Amend it again in 1981, and amended the last time in 1987.
Were, thank you, were you able to make contact with GMA to see why none of us had gotten any information about it prior to, a month ago, or whenever it was, you brought it at the call meeting, that's when you brought it? Any communication from them?
The last time this was amended was in 1987.
Okay.
So that was the last time any legislative action was taken on this, on this law. And GMA, the only way they notify cities about changes in the law is through the legislative update that they send out here in the General Assembly and at the end of the General Assembly. They don't, they don't ever send a formal letter to a member city saying, you know, this law has been effective, I have been enacted, you may want to examine the code, see if it conflicts with anything you have in your code.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I, GMA recently had a District 11 meeting in Pearson on the day that we went to the vestiture service for the president of South Georgia State. So Ms. Neal, thank you for texting me that information, but by time I finished at South Georgia College, it would have been too late to go over for that, but I tried, at our next GMA meeting, I tried to ask questions about, about this, why they did not try to make us more informed. Because '87, that was a long time ago, so, okay, all right. But had we known about it, you know, that would have saved, that would have saved a lot of, you know, confusion up here for the mayor and council. But thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Jerome. The other thing that I have is, I, I think the record needs to be straightened in terms of regarding the mayor making the motion to reconsider the vote at that last meeting. On page 11, the minute states that Mayor Paul made the motion, so I just want to... So I just want to be clear, to find out if we are actually, if we were actually in compliance with him making that motion, or would something else be required, Mr. Jerome?
All right, let's have a little review.
Okay.
As you know, the charter is granted to the city of Douglas by the state of Georgia. The charter tells you what you can do and what you can't do. After the charter is granted to the city of Douglas, then the mayor and commission pass ordinances, enact ordinances, those kinda things. That's considered your code.
Right.
Now, there's a, a sort of a misunderstanding about Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay.
What it says for Douglas is, is that Douglas will generally follow Robert's Rules of Order. It does not say that you will literally follow Robert's Rules of Order. But there is a section in the code, section two thirty-one, that says all questions shall be put by the mayor or the member presiding.
Okay.
The member shall vote by voice. The majority determining all questions. Unless otherwise provided. The mayor, at his discretion, can call on any member to take the chair to allow him to address the board or make a motion. So the mayor can make a motion. And the mayor has an equal vote with all the other commissioners.
Yeah, I was clear about the, the vote, but I wasn't clear about making the motion.
That's in two thirty-one.
Okay.
But someone has to, but someone has to take the chair.
No, he said.
That's what he just said.
Read that again, please Jerome, cause I think you're saying he, he can relinquish or not.
Let him read what he said. I'm just telling him saying what he said. That's all I can do. Read it over, what'd you say?
The mayor at his, the mayor at his discretion. Which means he doesn't have to do this.
Right.
It's discretionary with him.
When he do it.
Call a member to take the chair.
Right.
He can keep the chair.
Right.
To allow him to address the board, which he does all the time.
Right.
Always has.
Right.
Or make a motion. So it's discretionary with the mayor, whether or not he wants somebody to take the chair in order for him to address the city commission or make a motion.
Okay. All right. Uh, thank you, so it's his discretion. So the last thing I have, the validity of the revote, since the first vote was actually in compliance, which was a four-two vote, how valid is that revote? That's my last question.
The revote, I believe, was four to three, was, wasn't that the vote?
I can't remember.
It was four to three.
Okay.
So that makes that question moot.
Three, three time.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Um, okay, last thing that I have, that was all I had from Mr. Adams. Last thing that I have is that, you know, uh, the last few weeks have been very contentious. We, we really, um, it's, it was just really crying and people motions were flying and, and everything. I still say, you know, I feel that some things happened that, uh, should not have happened, that were not fair. I, I say that, uh, I, I say strongly, I'm, I'm avid about treating people how I would like to be treated. There were some things that went on that I was just not in agreement with. But, uh, I will say, I think we need to try to move forward. Uh, but to move forward, oftentimes you have to correct your wrongs. So, and I think there were some wrongs that occurred and, uh, and they're gonna have to be corrected. That, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And have a discussion? I just want to say, um, if reiterating on what she said, that, um, you know, that it has been contentious these couple of weeks and, you know, and I just feel, you know, like with the persuading of others, changing votes and everything with the retaliation and discrimination, this all what they wanted. This all what the mayor commission voted for. And I just wish you all the best. I just wish you all the best on that. Right now, we'll turn this part over to, um, our city manager, city, city manager Davis.
The next item will be the consent items, um, and I'll read them all to you. From the work session, we have item one, approve the minutes. Item two, approve the purchase of multi, multiple pad mount transformers. Item three, approve the firefighter fundraiser walk for the Boys and Girls Club of Coffee County. Uh, item four, ratification, approve ratification of the Georgia firefighter standards and trainings grant submission. Item five, approve the, uh, child advocacy center, uh, rent agreement. Item six, approval of the industrial sewer users local limit changes. Item seven, approve the Jeep alone for wastewater, uh, improvements. Item eight, approve the ESG engineering for the back lift station of the wastewater plant. Item nine, approval of the Satilla Park infrastructure bid award. Item ten, approve the USDA, um, red leg, uh, loan for Coffee Regional. Item nine, approval of the generator costs, um, for the barbecue festival. And item twelve, approve the, uh, contract with BBTB for the city hall building project. And those are all the items from the work session on the consent agenda.
Is there a motion? Should we move?
Second.
Any discussion? All of that in, are in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carried.
And there are no items from the work session for discussion, or?
Thank you. City manager Davis for that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Right now, this time we have staff comments by Mrs. Sanders.
Thank you. Just want to, uh, make some quick announcements, um. During the month of October, the city of Douglas, many of our departments has an array of service, uh, initiatives coming, service promotions coming up. We will, um, be celebrating fire prevention week, natural gas week, public power week, and also customer appreciation days during the month of October. We encourage our customers, if you're in city hall or close by, drop by on Friday, there's gonna have free popcorn for you. And also, there's a chance to register for some giveaways during the month of October. We would like to invite our natural gas customers to call, uh, the main office at, um, three eight nine, three four two seven to sign up for free pilot lightings during the month of October. Um, those who are on the list, um, sometime in October, November, they'll get started with those, um, to get those, uh, pilot lights lit for you. And this is the only time of the year that that is offered by the natural gas department. Our next residential jump, drop-off day is coming up on Saturday, October the first, and it'll be from eight AM until twelve noon. And it's at the pole yard, which is adjacent to, um, the post office. Um, we want to announce, um, we know it's early, it's still in September, but we are openly taking registrations for the Festival of Lights Christmas Parade. The theme this year is celebrate the music and melodies of Christmas. The Christmas parade, um, is sponsored each year by the city of Douglas, the Coffee County Commission and Douglas Coffee County Chamber of Commerce. For applications, you can go to our website, cityofdouglas.com, or you can stop by the Ashley Slater House at two eleven South Gaskin Avenue to get registered for that. There are some job opportunities posted on our website. And, um, applicants who are interested, they can go and apply online by setting up a profile. And also, we have some bid opportunities that are posted as well. And we encourage our citizens to, um, go to our website if you wanna receive information on our monthly e-newsletter, job postings, bids, um, different events announcements, you can sign up through the notify me module to stay engaged with what's going on with our local government. Those are the announcements that I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right now, this time we will have comments by the mayor and commission. Be mindful that we will be going to an exec- uh, executive session in utilities appeals hearing. So at this time, we'll start off with Commissioner Gao.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to, uh, congratulate all of our students that participated in our homecoming events this past week with the Coffee County school system. As everyone probably is well aware, our varsity football Trojans, uh, were victorious Friday night. It was a laugher, I just got to say, was it fifty-three to nothing at halftime? They scheduled the right team for homecoming. Uh, but we do start the region schedule, so be aware, it gets real now. And the playoff, playoff spot will be on the line there. Um, I'd also like to recognize our Atlanta Braves, who were able to clinch the National League East Division title this past weekend, which means they get a playoff berth. I think their rebuild is a little bit ahead of schedule. All of us fans are looking forward to that. Also like to congratulate our Georgia Bulldog football team. They showed the Missouri Tigers how we can play SEC football. You know, show me state, I think we showed them. Um, but, uh, on a more somber note, many of you may have heard, uh, this morning, a young man, uh, at Appleton County High School shot himself in a bathroom over there and they had to lock down the school. Uh, last I heard, the young man did survive and was life flighted to Savannah. But I just, I'll just bring that up as a reminder to all of us, to us as parents, to all, uh, our young people in our school systems, that when you have somebody that may be having some trouble, um, let somebody know. If you are in a position where you can give some encouragement and, uh, maybe meet a need, take that opportunity, but if you're concerned about one of your classmates or a family member who seems to be struggling in whatever way, let somebody know that can make a difference. Um, I don't know if that's exactly the case of what took place here, but it's just, again, a reminder. Um, sometimes we take for granted the things that our children go through, but just like adults feel stress and, and things weigh on them, the same things happens to our children. Those of us that can remember sometime that the stress that we feel from trying to, uh, get grades or trying to make a, a sports team or whatever, um, sometimes we put a little bit too much pressure on ourselves when we do this or we feel pressure from outside for whatever reason, but, uh, take the opportunity to check on somebody that you care about, particularly if they seem to be low or, or something's going on. We've also had a couple of citizens in, in, that live in Coffee County killed in wrecks. Again, a reminder, let's, let's make sure, I think about this often because I'm an impatient person by nature and I like to get where I'm going, but I always remember, you know, you can't get there if you get in a wreck. Certainly not gonna get there if you get killed. Let's please take it, take those few extra seconds to make sure that we're operating our vehicles in a safe manner. And we always have to watch out for the other, for the other man as well out there on the road. You don't ever know what somebody else may do as well, so, but just a reminder, let's do the best we can to be safe on our roadways. Um, that's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, one thing I would like to talk about is, um, had an opportunity to, um, attend the youth council on Thursday. And it was very, very interesting. Um, there was, and Miss Wannetta, I'm gonna put you on the spot, you know, everything. Um, there was several things that he, they talked about, you know, and one of the main thing was bullying. And, um, Miss Wannetta, would you please kinda emphasize on what they talked about that night? You know, uh, if you would, please.
Um, at the meeting, they spoke about bullying and what they're gonna do is the month of October is National Bully Awareness Month. And they're gonna walk from the Old Atlantic Coast Building all the way down to Parks Plaza and they'll be wearing orange. It'll be, um, can't say, I think it's the third, might be the third Saturday, but we'll give everybody an update, third Saturday, uh, in October. And they'll be walking to just bring awareness to bullying. That's one of the things that they did discuss.
And there were more projects too that they was working on, was it, uh, cancer, uh, no?
Well, you have the ribbons here and they were, um, this month, September is can- uh, childhood cancer awareness month and that is why you see the, the yellow, the gold ribbons placed in the council room. So they did, um, bring awareness and had a spo- uh, someone who had to deal with it with their child, one of our employees, and they came and spoke to them about that. So that is another thing, um, that they did speak about.
Okay. I appreciate that. Um, like I say, um, let's get out and support our, the youth council because they are doing a good thing, you know, and they need our support. And just like the young lady has spoken, you know, everything, they are the future of, uh, of tomorrow, you know, so we need to get out and support them. Uh, we have a youth council here and they do not get the support that they should get from the, um, citizen of Douglas. So let's get behind them, push them, you know, everything, thank you very much.
Commissioner McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wanna say, um, like Commissioner Gao, and I'm very proud of our, of our young folks for conducting themselves in a, hopefully, um, an adult manner and, and having a safe homecoming, um, two thousand eighteen for Coffee High. And, um, I've, we've all seen and heard other cities and communities where there was tragedy during a time like that. And so, I'm, I'm proud of our young folks. And, um, I also wanna say congratulations to the Childhood Cancer Awareness Group. They've done a fabulous job this month. I don't think any of us can say we hadn't seen a gold ribbon or we haven't been asked to participate or in some way help support this cause. And it's a wonderful cause. They've got their silent auction coming up and then their, um, live auction coming up. So help these ladies, they did the concert, um, was it Saturday, Saturday night? Cause we had the class reunion to go to, but with everything going on, they still had a ra- a real good turnout for the concert at the Martin Center. And, um, and she, they were real pleased with that. So I commend them and I guess, um, you know, if we haven't donated enough money in the month of October, then September's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And, uh, the Passionately Pink group will be here, our first meeting of October for a proclamation signing and recognition by our group. And, but let me mention the Pink House. If you've, if you haven't heard of the Pink House, the Pink House is for breast cancer, um, T-shirt sales, and we're gonna be doing a big reception there on the twenty-seventh and it will be from four-thirty to six-thirty. I say we, cause I'm a part of that group too. And, um, from four-thirty to six-thirty, we're gonna do a, a reception for our breast cancer survivors in South Georgia, okay? Coffee County and surrounding counties. And this is a very emotional time and a very, just a very touching time for, um, lots of those women to get together and share their stories. So, um, again, stop by and get your T-shirts and be ready for the pink, um, the Pink Out next month. Um, you know, and I think Commissioner Pearson did a good job of saying that we've had a very, um, emotional past thirty days or so. And I'm so glad to hear and to see that there can be recovery from that. I, I just am so proud of Douglas and Coffee County and I so much want this to be the kinda place people wanna, you know, open their businesses and, um, bring their families to and their, you know, raise their children in this community. I, I want there to be, I wanna set a good example. When we have our mayor's youth council here, I want them to come in this room and know that we treat each other with respect. And we may not always agree, we won't always agree, certainly. We don't do that even within our own families oftentimes. But if we can come together and if we can respect each other's opinions and do it in such a way that, that we're forgiving and that we're willing to be about the city's business. And you saw how many, if you were here earlier, you heard the agenda items we covered tonight. And, um, I'm very proud of this. So, thank you, Mayor Protem. Oh, by the way, we miss our mayor too tonight. We, we would be remiss without saying.
I was gonna say.
He's on vacation, okay, in Cancun, and we wish them a safe trip home, so thank you. Okay. Sorry, don't mean to disturb you.
Commissioner Moore, please.
Hey, I, I wanna say I didn't wanna cause any confusion. Uh, I didn't mean to dress up, you know, we, I know we look like twins, but I am the younger one and I am the one that roots for the Bulldogs. The real Georgia teacher.
I'm a jacket.
Sure.
Thank you, Mike, I'll, I'll forgive you for that, but, uh, you know, I'd rather be lucky than good anytime. But, uh, I want to congratulate Mike Hudson on the job he did on the, uh, barbecue festival.
Yes, and Georgia. Great, great job, Georgia and Mike on that, very good, yeah.
Well, Mike took all the credit for it too. And when he brings us how much it costs, we may, I may not brag on it, but anyhow, but, uh, thank you and, uh, appreciate the effort that people put out. And a friend there from New York's come back to Douglas, she got, uh, got all cityfied and, but, uh, anyhow.
Got cityfied?
Yeah. But she's come back to Douglas anyhow, but it's good to see everybody and, uh, it's going to be wonderful long.
We hope.
When's time?
We're ready for it.
When's time we will?
Last weekend in October.
Huh?
Last weekend in October.
Oh, somebody missed. Oh, somebody misled me, they shouldn't do that, but anyhow, that's all I have to say there, Mayor Protem.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pearson?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I just have a couple of things. Um, well, I'd just like to, first of all, say also, uh, congratulations to all of the homecoming winners. I saw a little something on Facebook, uh, I pray I be able to try to go to some of the football games sometime. I, I, I don't know, uh, but anyway, I'm a big football fan, and I don't really understand what be going on.
You hit me back.
All I know is when they.
My boys are golfers. They play golf, so.
But, but I'm proud of them, I'm proud of you Trojans and all of you. Uh, I heard that there were a couple of deaths, uh, this weekend. Ms. Patricia Fletcher condolences to her family, and a young guy, I don't know him, Cedric James, I think, Nichols? Condolences to their family, to anybody who has, uh, death, I just.
Yes, and Mr. Josie's, uh-huh.
Former commissioner Dennis Josie's wife, Ms. Jane Josie. Condolences, uh, to Mr. Josie and, and, and their daughters, praying for all of them. Um, I have a couple of things that I'd like to, uh, make mention of. Uh, I told, at the work session, I stated that there's an organization, Community Action Awareness Committee, and we're gonna have our next meeting Saturday, October the first, the first Saturday in October, I think it's the first. And it's gonna be at ten o'clock AM at Gaines Chapel AME Church. Gaines Chapel AME Church. And we are meeting, trying to collaborate, uh, bring various organizations together to work together. We're asking the American Legion, American Legion, the Ladies Auxiliary, and the American Legion is now in the leadership of Commander Athalene Walker. So, uh, we want you to get the message out to all of your people, uh, at the Legion and Ladies Auxiliary, as well as Mr. Roscoe Allen, Hundred Men in Black, you get the message to them. Uh, I need somebody from Boss Riders to contact, um, all of their members, as well as the Eastern Stars and the Masons. Again, that's gonna be the first Saturday in October, ten o'clock, Gaines Chapel AME Church, Community Action Awareness Committee. The last thing that I have, Mr. Mayor Protem, is we all know that, uh, election is coming up. I received several of these booklets, and I have some, if people would like some, they can call me, nine-one-two-three-nine-three-four-six-two-nine, from, uh, spreadthevote.org, about the midterm elections, who's running. Um, and what, and it also, in addition to telling you who's running, it tells you what their platform is, what they stand for. So please, if you like one, I'll get you one. I'd just like to quickly say the important dates for the general election. I, when I got this from the Coffee County Board of Elections and Registration, uh, the election date is November the sixth. That is the date to vote for the general election. The last day to register to vote is October the ninth, October ninth, last day to get registered. Uh, you can start mailing your absentee ballots, uh, it was the date for that started September eighteen. And the last day to apply for absentee ballot is November the second. Advance voting, which is also called early voting, starts October the fifteenth, and it runs through November the second from eight-thirty AM to five o'clock PM. So those are the dates for that, you need to make sure you are well aware of the dates. And if you need, uh, to get registered, you could go to the registrar's office and get you one, or I have some. And if you are unable to get out to go to the polls and vote, you can get an absentee ballot application. Have your family members for the elderly and disabled to get you one of these, and your ballot will be mailed to you. And I am announcing this because of the fact that this election is very important, and people need to realize that your vote does make a difference. If you stay home, you're gonna have to suffer with whatever you get. And I can promise you, it's not gonna be good if you stay home and don't go vote. Please, get registered and go to the polls and cast your vote for the candidate of your choice who you believe will make a difference. Voting is so important, it's always been very important to me since a very young girl. I'm, I went to meetings like this with my mom. So I'm very instrumental in trying to get the community involved with voting. If you don't like how things are going, the way to change it is to go to the ballot box and cast your vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Pierce.
Yes, sir.
Well, um, our mayor is absent on tonight, he's on vacation. And, um, like she says, to iterate on voting, um, the voting deadline is October the ninth.
To get registered.
To get registered. Um, we asked that if you are inactive, please get active. Because if you're not active, you won't be able to cast a vote on November, or in early election, on November the sixth.
Right.
Because there are a lot of people that hadn't voted in years, in consecutive years, based upon, and they are putting them on a list of being inactive.
Right.
So you need to check on that to see if you are active, you know? And to see how can you, you know, go about that process. Also, we offer condolences to all the bereaved families, especially Commissioner Joseph, um, Josie. And, um, congratulations to the Coffee County Trojans on their win. Congratulations to the homecoming princess and our queen. She's a part, um, well, we had a princess that was a part of the youth, um, youth mayor's council, two of them. With a princess, she's a part, and our queen is a part also, we got three of them. Okay, who was the second one?
Avery Hearst.
Okay, Avery Hearst, okay, we got three of them, two of them were princesses. And, um, Mrs. Um, Mrs. Odom's is our queen that serves on, um, our mayor's youth council. I hats go out towards them all today.
Right.
And, um, also, um, I like to say this, I want to address this, I addressed this on Facebook, it's no secret, um, I was in a traffic stop on Friday night, Friday morning, one something, whatever. And they, um, booked me, took me down, everything, and, uh, my charge was, um, driving with no license on person. Um, and I just wanted to clear that up. Um, I know it's on Douglas now, Mr. Preston. And, um, I want to clear it up, because everybody make mistakes and everybody goes through. But what do I have a problem is, when the news is not getting out correctly, and the stuff that needs to get out isn't getting out.
Right.
This community has been affected by tragedy all this past weekend. Uh, my friend, I'm not gonna say the name, she was, um, in an incident on Manila Dr, uh, Manila Avenue. And, um, she was hurt badly, and, um, I didn't see no article on that. I don't see, she's fighting for her life, I don't, I didn't see no article on that. And, um, I just think that the things that we touch aren't touchable. We touch what we want to touch, when we want to touch it, and how we want to touch it.
Right.
And that's the same thing when it comes to the probation officer, um, Mr. Stephen Pitts. That wasn't touched until we kept complaining about it, kept saying something about it, then that was touched. But what I did have a problem with, um, that even if it was used for me, even when Commissioner Moore's, um, accusation and stuff that went on with him, they didn't use his mugshot. They used his City of Douglas picture. To do the story with.
Really?
Mm-hmm, and, um.
I didn't know that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You go on Douglin Mountain?
Yeah. Because I was reached, yeah, because I was reached out today by Mr. Preston, um, to get a statement that he had already written. But I told him that I didn't want to give a comment, because I, I addressed my own constituents in the old City of Douglas, I needed to, today. And, um, I just felt that, I mean, it's pointless, because I feel like, at the end of the day, you touch what you want to touch, and I just want to bring that in full awareness of the headline that was on there, but it's put, you know, I'm saying that the license was suspended, but you didn't put another charge on there, but it's okay. But one day, it's gonna be a story that's written, Mr. Preston, that you ain't gonna be able to write one day.
Alright.
And, um, it's gonna come that day.
Yeah.
It's gonna come that day.
Yeah.
It's gonna come that day. It's gonna come that day, Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen. It's gonna come a day to, well, you're not gonna be able to write a story, and I'm not gonna be able to write a story. I'm not gonna be able to go Facebook Live, and you're not gonna be able to go Facebook Live. It's gonna be stories written about both of us that we can't write.
Alright.
But I'm only standing for right.
Mm-hmm.
I'm only standing for right. If I can help somebody along the way, then my living will not be in vain. And I explained to my constituents, because it's a lot of stuff, it's a lot of things that have been done that have not been touched.
Right.
And the one thing I could say about it, the Coffee County Sheriff Department was so nice to me when I went there. I stayed nineteen minutes, and they were so nice to me, they was hospitable, they treated me right. But I would like to say, and I wanted to, I wanted to address that issue with Mr. Preston, because he's here tonight, and I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you, I don't have no malice in my heart, I don't have no hatred in my heart. Because if I want to see Jesus, I gotta forgive everybody that.
That's right.
That does evil around me.
Yes.
Because the Bible speaks of evil, that it's always present, and always. And I can, I know you write, I know you write, you know, your articles and stuff like that, and everything, that's good. But one day, always remember, it's gonna be a story written on me and you that we will not be able to write. Always remember that.
Yes.
And, um, I'd like to get a motion, um, to go into executive session.
Go move.
Just recess? We would like to recess to executive se, uh, executive session, utilities.
You don't need to go into executive session to have a utility, you know, hearing.
No, we was go, we're going into executive session. Right.
Yes, yes.
Yes, you're right.
You what now? So, but we still gotta get a motion on both of those. I mean, on that one. But we're going to.
So recess.
So we'll go to recess, okay, we'll do recess at this moment.
Okay.
Okay, y'all are cleared, have a good evening.